Good morning. I call the May 21st, 2019 meeting with the Celine County Board of Commissioners. First please call the roll.
Mr. Chadwick, Mr. Spark, Mr. Vidrickson, Mr. Weath, Mr. Wood.
I have some please stand and join me in a flag salute called by a moment of silence.
Before we move forward with our meeting, I want to give everyone an update on the disaster
that's ongoing right now in Celine County. There was a meeting this morning at 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., or 8:30 actually, attended by about forty people of various organizations and so forth regarding procedures and what everyone's job is going to be during the flooding that's occurring in Celine County right now. A shelter has been set up for residents who wish to evacuate or have been displaced by the flooding at the First Covenant Church located at 2625 East Magnolia. A separate shelter has been set up for household pets, and that location would be at Barn One at the Expo Center. And sandbags and so forth are being delivered over there this morning, and I'll let panic go into that in just a moment regarding other things. State agencies are involved over there with the emergency people, there's assistance. Besides county officials this morning, the mayor of New Cambria, officials from West ire, rural fire departments, health department, Union Pacific Railroad, sheriff's department, police department, fire departments, road and bridge departments, Salina Regional Health Center, and the Red Cross. And I probably left one or two out, but there were a lot of people there, a lot of concerned people, a lot of coordinations going on. And our new emergency preparedness director, Michelle, is being indoctrinated at the highest degree, let me tell you. There probably hasn't been anything like this going on around here for about ten years or more. And she's right in there and has hit the ground running along with assistance from Bernie and Hannah, obviously is still involved heavily with that. So at this time, I'd like to call on Hannah and to give you a further update regarding what's going on.
Sure. So as it sits, Celine County faces the potential for record flooding, especially the Smoky Hill River near New Cambria, and record flooding or at record flooding at Mulberry Creek near Salina. As it sits now, the Mulberry Creek has the potential to crest at 27.8 feet, which is the previous record that was held in 2007. To give everybody an idea as far as what that would look like, at that level, 27.8 feet, roads would flood up to three feet of water in northern Salina, mostly around the Stimel Road and south of Ninth Street to Ohio Street. We do have maybe that anticipation that other flooding can occur north of I-70 that might potentially cause some road closures. We are not there yet, but we do anticipate those based off of historical data. Along the Smoky Hill River in New Cambria, we are looking at record flooding. Previous record was 31 feet, and their projection is 33.2 feet. That is projected to crest on Wednesday morning. As it sits now, the areas of around the city of New Cambria will be flooded along with roads in the vicinity to that river. We do expect widespread flooding in a lot of those low-line areas, and with the predictions we are making, or we're certainly encouraging residents that live not only in those areas but other areas that are flood-prone to make those appropriate plans now to be prepared to evacuate if the conditions warrant. As Commissioner Vidrickson said, both the city and county staff are working on resources and operations plans in anticipation of this event. And one of the things that we do want to cover is that we are working on a, just a dedicated website, so we can have a one-stop shop basically for people to go to that will have all the information needed, not only on the projection of the river cresting, but also road closures and other emergency information. Hopefully, we will get that up and running before too terribly long. Information on those closed roads as well as additional emergency information will be released to the media, as well as posted on the Celine County and the city of Salinas' Facebook sites, so those can be used as resources too. In addition to that, we do have an emergency notification system by the name of Code Red that has been set up, and we have already initiated some messaging to those residents in New Cambria and those on the northern end of Salina regarding those potential of the flooding conditions and requesting for residents to make proper plans. That is something that can be utilized for emergency messaging. If you are interested at all in receiving those notifications, if you live in those flood-prone areas, please visit either the Celine County's website or City Salinas' website and click on the Code Red icon to sign up. It can send phone calls, text messages, and email. In anticipation of this event, the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners did sign a disaster declaration yesterday afternoon, and that has put us into our emergency operations plan and operations on that end. So we really have appreciated all of the cooperation and collaboration that we've received so far, and our hope is that everything will be a coordinated and well-tuned machine by the time we have some of our operations plans up and running and ready to go. So thank you, Chairman, for your participation yesterday, and we will try to keep you guys informed on this event moving forward.
Very good. Thank you, Hannah. That's a detailed report, and it is a very serious situation out there. And as the national saying goes, turn around, don't drown. So we'll move forward then with our meeting, and we'll move to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission?
My name's Dennis Benoit. I live in Geneseo, Kansas, and I'm here today. This is my hometown. I was born here, so that's why I say this flooding is severe, but the 51 was even worse. So hopefully, everybody does follow instructions and turn around, don't drown. While I'm here, I'm here today for a little update about our southern border of America. I'm concerned over the border is broken. It's completely broken. The caravans are coming up one after another, funded partly by our good friends at the U.N. and George Soros. And I think Trump has tried to work with the president of Mexico to know a bell, and I think he's about ready to do the emergency, because it is an emergency. They're just catching and releasing. They're not checking for measles, smallpox, or anything, tuberculosis. The drugs, they're stopping a great deal of drugs from coming in, but the five mile this way, they just can't even estimate how much is coming in. And I'm sure Wichita would be a prime location for it. So I think Trump is going to go ahead, and through the Constitution, it is stated that his job is to protect the borders. So I think he's going to do that by putting the military down there in full force to stop the flow of immigrants. They're flooding in, there is no way to stop them, and he doesn't want to hurt them. So I'm all for it. I voted for Trump, and I'm supporting him. And that, but that's the only logical explanation for what's going to have to happen. And so I'm all for it. What can you do at home? You need to, and this would be a good time, prepare, be prepared. You need to be able to take care of yourself, keep in touch with your family, and see what's going on, but you need to be prepared. And at least a week worth of food and water in case something does happen. You can always use it later on. That, it's the time to prepare, and it's like insurance. And if you don't use it, that's great. But if you need to use it, the stores are going to be closed, the trucks can't get in, and FEMA is going to arrive about a week after the disaster. So thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. Joan Ratsliff, Salina. I hope the gentleman from Geneseo wasn't talking about county business. I had something to say about the jail, the jail matter, and I wanted to thank the commission for having their evening meeting. You didn't have to do that, but it was the right thing to do, and I think it was very much appreciated, well-attended, and certainly I anticipate more public involvement in this matter. It's very important, and I see it, you know, it's a big problem, but also an opportunity to do something better than we have been doing that brought us to this point. So I wanted to mention that I, you know, it might have been in there, but I didn't see in the consultant's report about the impact of state policies on the county jail, where they used to house a lot of those prisoners, and now are requiring the county jails to house them longer than they, than they used to. So that would be an impact. And I want to encourage the county commission to lobby the state to go back to the state handling the state's business instead of dumping it on the county. So that's one thing. Another thing that I have heard, and I don't have a lot of personal experience with this, is a matter of how policing occurs in Salina, which also affects our jail population, where it may be that with just a little bit more of investigation on the law enforcement officer's part, they could discover that the person was not actually in violation, or they could make a more sensible judgment call rather than take them to jail. And the cascade of events that occurs after that, that perpetuates them remaining in jail when, when even if they were convicted of this offense or alleged offense, they wouldn't be jailed. So there's that. Another is, again, from the state, and that is how many judges we have, how many public defenders we have, things like that. And so those are the things that I wanted to mention about that. And also, again, thank you for having that evening meeting. There was a friend of mine who stood up and spoke to prisoners needing treatment oftentimes rather than incarceration, and I'm sure that Sheriff Kokenowski had mentioned that same issue and other law enforcement also in corrections. And she was going to tell you today, she couldn't be here, so I'm going to pass along her message. That's Lynne Meyer, and that is that a group of citizens is working on, they visited Reno Jail, they were impressed with their programs, and this group of Salina citizens are working on some ideas to bring to you at a later time. So that's all I have on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve Agenda for Public Forum as Presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Agenda for the Public Forum as Presented.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve today's Agenda for the Public Forum as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion does carry. Item number two.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for April 30th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the County Commission Minutes of April 30th, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the County Commission Minutes of April 30th, 2019 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion does carry. Item number three.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for May 7th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the County Commission Minutes of May 7th, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the County Commission Minutes of May 7th, 2019 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Move to item number four.
Emergency Medical Services Week Proclamation with Fire Chief Kevin Royce from the Salina Fire Department.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Kevin Royce, Fire Chief, City Salina. This is EMS Week, and to designate the week of May 19th to 25th, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas members of the Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery of those who experience any sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and trained members of the public, and any other out-of-hospital care providers. And whereas members of the Emergency Medical Service Teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training, continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service Providers by designated Emergency Medical Service Week. Now therefore, I, Robert Vidrickson, Chairman, Celine County Commission, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week. I would like to personally thank this governing body for allowing us to be the progress, the most progressive EMS system in the entire state. I'm very extremely proud of this department and the services we provide for this community. I think we have exceptional EMS services here, and...
Are there any functions or activities associated with...
Just doing our job every day.
And that's for sure. I can speak firsthand. I've had experience with the EMS and the fire department, and I would, I would have to say that we are second to none. Their response time and their ability to do their job and the way they respond is just phenomenal, and I'm proud to be part of the deal too. So any other comments from Commissioners?
I'd like to second that. I think that the EMS here in Celine County shows how, how good marriage the county and the city had together. And I was able to witness, and I agree with you, Celine County has the finest EMS service in the state without a doubt, and that's an attribute to yourself and your staff.
Well, it's an appreciative of your support too. We couldn't do it without you.
Not to put you on the spot, but do you know the number of calls you had last year?
Total or EMS?
EMS.
EMS. We were about 7,300. So it just kind of keeps creeping up. It's about eighty, eighty to eighty-three percent of our workload is on the emergency medical care side, so...
Amazing.
And I've heard this number before, but how many ambulances do we have in...
We run four frontline ambulances and have the capabilities of putting three more reserves on when needed.
And each ambulance is equipped with what, two paramedics or...
One paramedic and one EMT.
Okay.
We also have various members of our department are what's considered critical care EMT, or paramedics, which allows them to provide interfacility transfers for more serious patients that not every department can, can do.
This is not an interrogation. Tell me, what is the difference between an EMT and a paramedic?
An EMT is responsible and has the skills and abilities and equipment provided to perform what's known as basic life support, CPR, minor cuts, abrasions. A paramedic, obviously, is an associate degree program. It's a two-year program, and that enables them to consider, or to provide what's considered advanced life support skills such as medication, delivery of medication, invasive skills, things like that.
Very good. Well, I hear there, there are ambulances going up and down the street periodically, so...
We are busy.
We know they're on the job, so...
We are busy.
I do have a signed proclamation for you, so I'll present you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Great job. Very good job.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we declare the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Service Week.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we declare the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week. And all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion does carry unanimously. Thank you, Monty. Item number five.
Human Resources Update with Marilyn Lemer, Human Resources Director.
And good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Over this two-month reporting period, we had three workers' compensation injuries, but with no lost time, no unemployment appeals. Our insurance plan continues to run very well. We are also at the point where we are doing an IRS Form 720. Our consultancy biz is assisting us with the completion of that. This is for the Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Institute, or POCORI. Fee, it is required under the Affordable Care Act, and it actually sunsets in 2020, so we'll be paying that fee this year, and then paying again one more year. And so it helps to fund the Affordable Care Act. Employment updates. Had fourteen new hires, four individuals that either transferred or promoted. Fourteen left us. As far as vacant positions, corrections officers, we continue to look for those. We are sitting on seven vacancies at this time, actually five vacancies plus two over hires that we hope to put in there just to have a little cushion. We do have, had some testing and interviewing that happened yesterday, and we had four good candidates that we're proceeding with, so we hope to get that number down on those corrections officer vacancies. Office manager in the attorney's office, there is pending a selection on that position. We have a part-time clinic receptionist over at the health department, have an interview scheduled for the 28th. Intensive supervision officer at Community Corrections, we have interviews later this week, and the legal secretary receptionist position in the attorney's office that I had listed on there, that actually has been filled, but it created a vacancy in the vehicle registration office. So we'll be posting that vacancy very soon. Tasks coming up, we do have another blood drive in June, on June 20th. We are continuing negotiations with the two bargaining units, and we'll, of course, continue to work on filling those vacancies.
All right. Thank you for a detailed report. I want to ask a question. I notice in the new employee hires, seasonal mowers, are all of those positions filled?
They are.
Okay, good. I mean, there's a, I noticed some retired names on there that it's an excellent opportunity for someone who feels like they have idle time to go out and earn a few dollars and help us out at the same time.
Yeah, we had three come back from last year.
I see that.
And we've got some new ones as well.
I see that. I didn't know how many their positions there were there, so appreciate it very much. Any other questions or interrogation of Mrs. Lemer from the commission? All right. Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number six.
RFA 148-19, Exceptions and Variances with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning again, Hannah.
Good morning. In a study session that was held last week on the 14th of May, the Board of Commissioners was informed of the expired terms of the Board of Zoning Appeals members. In the absence of the Board of Zoning Appeals, this request for action is coming before the commission. An individual is proposing a three-acre split from a parent parcel for a new residential structure, and the map for that should be attached to the request for action. The parcel is fronting on Muir Road and just south of Shipton Road. The frontage proposed would be less than that required 200 feet in an agricultural zoning district. The individual selling to the developer the three acres is unwilling to sell additional land, which would bring the proposed slit into conformance with those, that required road frontage. Furthermore, there's a low-lying drainage area that's immediately adjacent to Muir Road. This area, this particular area, if filled or modified by a residential structure, may impact drainage characteristics, not only on that property, but also on adjacent properties along Muir Road, so that the proposed split would be located on higher ground and beyond that drainage easement. Currently in our zoning regulations, in Article 13A-3, it does allow for the option of frontage less than that 200 feet, but this provision is only allowed for existing residential structures with a driveway that has been in place for longer than five years. Staff is currently given only administrative approval for those exceptions, not to exceed 10% of the provisions outlined in a specific zoning district. To give you an example, a frontage of 200 feet, it can be reduced by the planning and zoning administrator by 180 feet with...
Zoning Administrator by 180 feet without a Board of Zoning Appeals consideration, but because this would only be 30 feet of frontage, it comes before you. Although the inability of the developer to acquire additional frontage is technically a civil matter, but due to the low-lying drainage area, staff does believe that this would fall into a special physical circumstance regarding the property and/or the surrounding area that would justify granting this particular exception. The alternatives that you have in front of you today is to direct staff to make an administrative decision on this exception based on the physical circumstances of the lot, as well as in the absence of a Board of Zoning Appeals. Staff finds that granting this exception in this case would not violate the purpose and the intent of our regulations, or that we could direct staff to have an applicant file a formal exception to be considered at a public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners. Staff recommends granting the temporary authority to the Planning and Zoning Administrator for exceptions involving frontage only, with appeals from the public regarding staff's decision to be heard by the Board of County Commissioners. Staff would retain such authority until the Board of Zoning Appeals is reinstated or at such time that the Commissioners would deem appropriate. There is no budget impact for this particular request.
To be clear, staff recommends granting temporary authority to the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the exceptions involving the frontage only. That's what we're voting on today.
That is correct, sir.
Are there questions or comments from Commissioners?
I appreciate pushing this off a week so we could see the aerial and be able to go out there. Couple comments. Do you think that this sets any sort of a precedent? And that's always my concern, is then somebody drives by that and said, well, you let them do this and not this. And will there ever be any, I mean, is there some language that'll be somewhere that'll say 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, why this commission decided to do this if we decide to?
I appreciate that comment Commissioner. So, you are exactly correct. That is one thing that we do look at in any type of request that comes forward. Our intention is at the planning, to merge our Planning Commission board with, to also be the Board of Zoning Appeals. At that point in time, we would have that established, kind of a little bit more oversight. In regards to your particular question, we are able to justify, just based off of the topography of that area, that it really does truly meet that, really that exception, for it to be considered a special, special physical circumstance regarding the property that would have the impact to not only affect that particular home, but also residents or other properties in the future, whether it be downstream from that location.
Right. And just to be clear, is if that was put closer to Muir Road, the potential for flooding of Muir Road would happen because you would have taken away that low-lying area? Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Well, and I'll back up some of those comments by saying that I do believe that those responsibilities lie within that department and that appeals board that is being proposed. I mean, that's what we hire those people for, is to make those types of decisions. So, that's, I will definitely be voting with yes on this. So, any other comments from Commissioners?
Just to get it straight, the logistics, this, this request came from this person and went to the Planning and Zoning Director or the Planning and Zoning Board?
This went directly to the Planning and Zoning Administrator. He, but the Planning and Zoning Administrator only has administrative authority to grant up to basically 10% of an exception. Because that exceeds that 10%, that request would go directly to a Board of Zoning Appeals, but in the absence of a Board of Zoning Appeals, the decision is coming directly to you until that can be established. The reason as to why we are kind of pushing this in front of, or presenting this in front of the Commissioners is that we are getting to the point where this particular gentleman is wanting to start construction of the residence before too terribly long. The merging of our Board of Zoning Appeals with the Planning Commission is going to take us probably at least a couple of months because there will have to be a change in code, as well as additional conversation with County Council.
But will this still have to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Board to see if it, if they even approve this?
No, sir. No. This is a request for an exception of what's already written in county code, and that is not something that would go in front of the Planning Commission itself, even on a regular basis.
Okay.
Right.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say I appreciate the staff looking into this and, again, giving us another week to think about it, and appreciate Commissioner White's comments last week about that also. So, but I do move that we grant temporary authority to the Planning and Zoning Administrator as recommended in RFA 148-19.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we grant temporary authority to the Planning and Zoning Administrator as recommended in RFA 148-19. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion does carry unanimously. That brings us to the end of today's agenda. We will take a short break, and will be followed by an administrator's update, along with some budgetary items that we will be going over. Appreciate everybody watching today and attending today's meeting. So, is there any other announcements come forward?
Just a comment, if I may. Starting to get a few phone calls about roads and when they're going to get fixed already, and I would, I would, a couple of comments. Number one, an individual commissioner does not know the day-to-day operations of the road and bridge and what they deem most important. But second of all, let's have a little patience about what has happened and what is coming up. As soon as it dries out, your road might not be the first one that gets done, and Mr. Chair, I think you memorize this better than I do. How many miles of road do we have?
I think the number is 1,078, some roder in that neighborhood, just short of 1,100 miles.
Commissioner White would know that, too. So, there's, it's going to take quite an effort to get things back to normal, and I just would like to ask everybody's patience.
I will expand on the, not only does this individual commissioner know the agenda there necessarily, nor do they have the power to do anything without the consensus or the approval of the majority of the board. So, it does take that action. A phone call to us can help. Maybe we can notify road and bridge, so forth. We'll probably give you that number to call, but for the most part, we are powerless in that regard to tell them to get a road of rock on XYZ road. So, anything else? I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you.